The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ailey's Radio Shack Dealer, and 570 Altman in downtown Ailey, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ailey, Nevada. Special meeting of the White Pine County Commission, June 6th, 2022.
I know the library's level Elizabeth knows she went to the wrong place.
I like that so much, especially if it's okay.
Yeah, yeah, I just figured she was gonna be at the wrong place, so I ran down there to let her know. She's out of her way on the door, too.
I'll have to think of that for the next time.
Yeah, I just want to look out for her, that's.
So consider a.
Yeah, that's me.
Oh goodness. Tell me about that.
Just don't tell her what I said. Your beard's burning. I told her my goddamn library didn't let you know you were at the wrong place.
That was so kind of you, too.
You were consistently escaped.
We said that.
He's almost here. He's almost here. Yeah, let's stand up. Yeah, we'll take your doctor's address, that's why. I'll call you from out there somewhere.
For where her face is in the direction.
Lori, watch your knees.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the White Pine County special meeting held here on Monday, June 6th, at the Aquatic Center. It's four o'clock, we have a moment of silence, and the first thing on the agenda now is public comment. Is there any public comment in the building? Is there anybody on the phone? Seeing none on the phone will entertain those in the building, George.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, on your agenda item two, you're considered to accept the reject finance director appointee's request for starting salary. The commission offered more to the appointee than was advertised. The appointee knew the commission made adjustments at the time that she attended. If you plan to pay more, then you need to re-advertise the position at the higher scale to everyone in mind who applied, had they known that. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item three, the moving stipend of 15K is way too high. You offered seven previously, offered 10. That, even that is too much. What are they using, Cadillacs to move here? Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item four, the newly appointed finance director doesn't accept what was previously offered, the commission needs to move on and begin advertising the position. You made adjustments when she was here, much more than what you had advertised. Mr. Chairman, I attended a court hearing recently and was disappointed that there was not a sound system in the courtroom. I had trouble hearing and an individual with hearing aids complained to the judge, and the judge invited him to come forward and sit in the jury box. That's not a good solution. The commission spent over a million dollars for the Justice Center, and you failed to provide a sound system? You need to address that immediately. Also, at the court session, a DVD was presented, and there wasn't a DVD player or a TV monitor for all participants to view the material. Pretty sloppy setup. Millions of dollars, and you can't even afford a sound system and a DVD player? Who designed that fiasco? You need to get rid of it. Mr. Chairman, you have to get to address the lack of proper ADA access to southeast corner of the so-called Justice Center. This is new construction and requires the minimum FD, excuse me, federal ADA standards, especially if that building has to be a public facility, which it is. What kind of land building inspector allowed that? You need to take the cost of correcting that issue out of the salary. And if it was a contractor, take it out of its bond. Mr. Chairman, I attended the regional finance commission meeting on May 18th, 2022, and asked for public information regarding numerous items regarding zoning and compliance. Some requests still have years, and to this date have not received and had responses. I gave the board a copy of a memo dated June 24th, 2005, and our mayor reminded them of NRS 244.368, which basically states that city's building codes supersedes county codes within one mile of the city limits. You're putting people on the boards that have little or no knowledge, they don't do their homework, we're going no work fast. Part of our problem is growing is people like that and a building inspector. You need to address that, and you're failing to do that.
Here's three minutes.
So I have to do that. Thank you. How much of answers to?
Is anyone else on the phone right now who'd like to speak to public comment? Nobody on their phone? Okay, hearing none and seeing none, we'll go on forward with the meeting. We'll go on to page two, item one. Is discussion for possible action to reevaluate finance director exempt pay scale to consider alternate pay scale options and set new scale for retention and recruitment purposes. Mike Weaver.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask the chairman to open up items one, two, and three, because they'll all be discussed together, and then when it comes time for the motion work, you take separate motions on each one.
Okay. Hearing that, we'll go on to item two. Item two is discussion for possible action to accept or reject finance director appointee's request for starting salary or other as negotiate and set appropriate starting salary at the same or new starting rate on an updated finance appropriate, starting salary at the same or new starting rate of the upheld finance director pay scale. That was item two. Item three, is discussion for possible action to grant a moving stipend unto a new finance director appointee in the amount not exceeding $15,000. Mike Weaver counted there, that's items one, two, and three.
Thank you. Is Ms. Workman on Zoom?
She is, good.
Okay. Is she able to participate?
She should be.
Ms. Francis, may I see the new pay scales?
Yeah.
That is Ms. Workman.
All right, great, can you hear me all right? Kathy?
Yeah.
All right. I'm passing up to the, kind of, we've opened up one, two, and three, so that you and the commission are free to discuss any of those items in negotiation for salary and moving stipend. What I'm handing out right now is a pay scale for the finance director, the current scale's on top, the one that was advertised for. Public comment indicated that perhaps the 110 was above the current pay scale, it wasn't. It was at step nine, you'll see it there. It's just at the top end of the pay scale. Okay, and then, because we're going to be discussing a counter offer on the salary, there's, you'll have to place it somewhere on another pay scale. If, that's the direction the county commission wants to go, so I asked Elizabeth to prepare these other pay scales, and the commission can decide, A, if it is going to deviate from the previous offer, where it's gonna place, where it's gonna start her, and where it's gonna place at what scale? Or B, if they're not gonna move forward with that, we need to prove a pay scale, so as public comment actually indicated, we can readvertise. Here you go, George.
Thank you.
And then here's more for the public. So, one of the things that should be considered before you start these discussions with Ms. Workman, is that had we advertised at the higher pay scale, much higher pay scale, perhaps we would have more applicants, different qualified applicants, maybe even applicants from the public center. So it's something to consider. That's why item four is on there, as a pressure relief valve, so we can move forward in whatever direction we need to, and we need to take up item four. With that said, I have Ms. Workman on the phone now. She indicated to me that she had a different salary range in mind, and she is countering to the county commission at 120, is her starting salary. Now, she's here to advocate for that amount, and talk to the commission about it, and you can do whatever you want. The items will allow you to either stand with the current offer of the 110. If you look at your pay scale, it's actually 110, 951, that's step nine on the pay scale. Okay? Hold on one second. Elizabeth, do you have this on your phone? Can you email this?
Um, I can go ahead and send it. Do you want me to send it to Ms. Workman?
Yeah, you can.
Can we just stick it in?
Work on that for a second. Kathy, we're gonna try to send you this pay scale, so you have everything in front of you.
Okay.
Basically, on the current finance director pay scale, at the last meeting when they, when they offered you the 110, that would be step nine. It's 110, 951, on step nine, on a 10-step pay scale, which, for her future planning, there's only one more step after that. So that was one of Ms. Workman's concerns, and I'm, and I'm just kinda articulating what were some of her concerns, so she can then talk to you about it, but I did not want to. That there would be no room for growth in the future of her career, she'd like to, she indicated that she'd like to finish her career, which could be ten, fifteen years on that. Okay? If you are gonna entertain a different amount than 110, as I indicated, you're gonna wanna pick one of these pay scales. If you're gonna consider the 120, it ought to be one of the seventeen and a half or twenty percent finance director increase, so that there's also room to grow. I mean, we're, we are in a different economy right now, you can do what, this commission has authority and the justification to do anything they want on this, on these pay scales. I think, this is just kind of manager speak, I don't make the decision, but we'd like to see Ms. Workman get trained, get some experience in the public sector as well. And it is a concern, and you will be accountable to the public, that if you do go with a much larger salary range, the argument can be that, had that been the intent in the first place, we could have perhaps had a larger applicant pool than just two applicants that got hold of it. So, that's where we're at, and so I'll open it to you guys to start talking to Ms. Workman.
Well, my first question is to Elizabeth.
Yes.
Up here on your, your current finance director, you have 10, 12, 15, 17, 20. Are those based on increases to the salary that you make or that is, that is offered? That 10%, let's just go with step one, 10% ahead, step one is 102,000. Currently, it goes to 98,000. Step 12 is 104, step 15% is 106, 17 is 109, and 20% is 111. So what are those percentages?
Those are percentages over the step one of the pay scale, which was just recently increased at your March, one of your March meetings, by seven and a half percent from what was the base scale, so that you could effectively recruit. And so, then, that's your, what the current is, is the 92, 860, and then the 10% is 10% above that, the twelve and a half percent is twelve and a half percent above that, and so on.
Anybody got any questions? That, that was my question. I think we should probably hear from Ms. Workman first, and then roundtable on the commission. Kathy, would you kind of present your options?
So, I guess I'm looking at the 120, because of all these visits, I wanted to circle my original move there. I was checking with movers and movers, and doing different things like that, and it would cost about 7,000 to 9,000, based on the quotes that I have, to actually move from here to there. And of course, that's somebody assisting me driving and packing and unpacking and all that stuff. And then, for me to purchase a home there, I was told between 7,000 and 9,000 dollars plus the cost. And I would also have to come up with, I believe she said five percent down, which could be anywhere from 4,000 to 15,000 dollars, depending on my pick. I actually got a sound like home in the area, and the lady is willing to rent it to me for eight months, and then let me decide if I want to buy or not. But her asking price, of course, in the trading market is a little overvalued, and you know how it has to be negotiated, and after I've actually get there to see the homes. So, the jump up, I guess, is based on what's gonna cost me as far as getting initially set up, the community initially there, to spend my career, the rest of my career, with your county or in the county government, and to also be comfortable enough to take classes and have online accessibility for those things, and to work under the sector and learn with the community, and to grow with the community. And to break my outside, being from a manufacturing background, from retail background in the county, so that we can hopefully grow with the community more and more.
Okay, you mentioned 9,000 possibly, thinking, you're asking for 15? It's on, I'm about that, that's, that's, 15,000 is a stipend for moving on item three. 120,000, I'll just start this out, and ask the rest of the commission to, would put you at 20% over finance, over what we had was allocated in March, and it also puts you at step five, which would be 20% above, plus a step five of 120, or close to, the 119 is four, 121 is five. When we started this negotiation, you know, just trying to do the best I can, we started at 93,000 up to 113,000, and depending on experience and whatnot, we were gonna negotiate or try to negotiate a settlement. When I looked at this, and looked at all this stuff, and listening to what your moving expenses would be, the cost of a house, the beginning of rent, I understand all that stuff, but that's far over what I consider a decent offer in the beginning, what we set our pay scale at, which was 93 to 113. I understand your qualifications, I understand your expertise in the civilian world, but again, we reiterate, this is a government entity, and we, we need to bring you up to speed, so it's gonna take you four, five, six months to get caught up to that. I'm not saying yea or nay on anything, I'm just simply pointing out what I see and what's in front of me, and you have that as well. And what you just told us, so you're, you're coming, your first offer to us is 120,000, which is 20% over finance director in step five, in that proximity, so.
There's a question of whether or not she.
Well, I.
Kathy has it. Kathy, did, did it come to you?
No, not yet. I'm bringing it up.
Okay.
Okay. And I apologize, it should be there shortly.
When I bring it up. Do you ever, someone on the line, could you just text up a picture?
I can't, I'll write it myself whenever. Just give her a second. I don't wanna go in public.
Sorry, I jumped the gun there.
It's all right.
Not knowing you didn't have it. You heard what I said, all right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just about there, I apologize, my computer was not up.
So you're saying there would be a new pay scale that allows you to grow further than that one step, correct?
Yes. That's what's being negotiated today.
That's what's being discussed today.
And that's what's being emailed to right now, there are different options of pay scales, so depending on where they start you at, or it depends on how long the pay scale goes. For example, if they start you at 110, on the current pay scale, there's only one step, but if they start you at 110 on the next pay scale up, that's essentially step five of 111, there'd be five more steps after that. I think it's important for you to know, well, Elizabeth, you want me to share this information?
Sure.
Our current finance director is making 126, and she has 20 years of experience in the public sector with an MBA, so, but, we're losing her, and so we have to, that's, this is all part of the competition, and we'd like Ms. Workman to get there eventually as well, with her MBA, man.
This is a discussion I'd be a lot more comfortable having a year from now as a review, once we, once we've seen Ms. Workman in action, and, and seen that she has settled into working in a government agency, and, and just seen what the growth, and then, to have this discussion at that time, I'm, I'm all ears. But, to have this discussion right now during the hiring process, I'm a little uncomfortable with.
Well, it's already been determined that we were gonna pay for the moving expense, but not to exceed, well, we haven't.
We haven't. We were discussing briefly, but it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay. Right when we started at seven, and realizing that with fuel costs the way it is, and what labor is now, you know, material is, of course, boxes, paper, whatever, that, that more likely than not be enough money to move.
And that's why, you know, she requested 15, so I put on there that you can set any amount up to that amount, including the 780. I think it's an important, I'm trying to moderate this, this back and forth with Ms. Workman and the commission, but I think one of the first steps to know is whether she will take the job at the, at the step nine, 110, 951, or are we, is the commission interested in moving beyond that to secure her appointment? I think that's the threshold of item two.
Do you think they appreciate this discussion from her to us, what she figures, based on the number she sees in front of her, what she figures her salary would be?
No, he's, he's asking, he's saying that it's an uncomfortable question, but we, we agreed to bring her on at 110, 951. The question that Mike is proposing is, has she agreed to take the job, and now we're just sorting out details, or is our decision today going to affect her decision on whether or not to accept the position?
I think you're correct with the second half of that.
Well, I think that what I'm trying to, maybe I said it wrong, I'm trying to get her input as to how she would be willing to accept, and we can get that on the scale here, and we can work to that.
Well, that was her counter offer, she's countered off.
Well, she hasn't said it, but she hasn't talked to us yet.
Yeah, wait, wait for her to get this, and once she has this, she can, we might be able to invite her shame, and her truth, and you already commented on where you're at with this, Lori, if you wanna invite her to tell us what her body needs. If I were negotiating this, not in an open meeting with the board, that's how I would do it, I'd say, what is it gonna take for you to start, yes or no? You know, to show us on this pay scale? And then, then the board can make a decision whether or not to go down that group comment. And then, if that's a rejection, then it's a rejection.
Well, if the 120 was initially asked because of the moving expense, we're taking 15, approximately 15,000 off of that, I would say, not totally, because you're also talking about buying a house and renting. So, I think that the 120, for me personally, right now, just starting out, is a little bit more than what, and I'm just telling you personally what I think right now.
And I wanna disclose.
But I'm not, I'm not opposed to raising it a little bit.
And I wanna disclose, one of the reasons why we're even here is because I called Ms. Workman, and I said, before you turn this down because your offer was 110, give the commission an opportunity to hear your side.
Right.
And what you need.
Right.
And if it's not gonna work, it's not gonna work. If you're gonna ask for more, you'll have to justify it, so. It's still yours, I couldn't make that decision on the phone with her, obviously.
Right, right. Well, and then also, you know, we would be paying for her education on top of the moving expenses.
Because that's part of the county policy.
Correct.
Elizabeth, did it go through?
It should have, yes.
Kathy, did you receive the, the write-up on the pay scales?
Yeah, I did.
All right, so you see the top one is the current scale, and essentially the 110 that you were offered is that step nine, 110, 951.
Okay.
And then what we, I think what the board's gonna need to hear from you is, where on this pay scale, which, which pay scale, and the, because the 120s are different on every pay scale, right? So tell us what step and which pay scale you'd be willing to come over at, and be frank, and tell us, you know, what your bottom line is, so they can negotiate this with you.
And we can give you, you know, a few minutes, yeah, don't, don't rush.
Take a five-minute break, Richard.
Yeah.
Would you like us to take a five-minute break while you evaluate your numbers? Kathy?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Are you on?
It needs just a second.
Hi.
There we go.
Yeah, we got you. Have you had time to, to kind of mow it over?
Okay. So, if I mow it over, I like to meet 211 starts, and either step three or step four, 12% or 15%, because I guess I do understand, you guys don't know what I do in the sector, I get that, but also don't underestimate what I run with the day. And it's even more that I'm walking down the road, that's what I can move up. So this is a yearly step regardless, or can yearly steps, except these steps based on my performance and what I do, how does that work?
It's supposed to be based on evaluation, and that's something that the successful finance director appointee will be helping me to, to implement, so Kathy, that would be part of something we want to be implementing, based on a positive review. The last few years, these have been natural steps, automatic to all employees, whoever they are on their respective pay scales on July 1st, year to year.
Right.
So these are yearly steps. And so just to clarify, are you saying you're looking at the 12 and a half percent increase to the finance director pay scale, and you're looking at step three or step four?
She said, she's gonna give you the 12 or 15, and the 111, 16, or 111, 6 comes in at either step four on the 12%, 12 and a half percent, step three on 15.
Okay.
So, I was gonna say, since it's agenda is first, that we, I was thinking, regardless of who we hire, we are not gonna be able to avoid making changes to this, to this pay scale, and many others to come with 20% inflation coming down the pipe. So I, I was thinking we should probably decide on that, and then, and it's, at least for me, what, what Kathy just said makes me feel good, I feel like we're not too far apart, in terms of what I'm comfortable with on, on doing this increase. And I was, I was landing somewhere between doing that 12, 15% increase, I think 12 and a half is appropriate for now. And I wanted to talk about that, but we also just, I think, let's maybe button that up, and then we can see where she wants to go.
That's why I put mine on stars.
But do you think, based on what we had applied for in our original send-out for resumes, because that was the pay scale we looked at, do you think it's fair to any other candidate to just go over that and jump right onto the 12 and a half percent increase, and stay status quo, or do you think we should be fair to everybody and just redo it? I mean, that's up to you guys.
But it's fair, it's, it, the hard part about hypotheticals is my grandfather taught me a burden handler to attend to push, and so it would be, it would, it would be a gamble to tell Kathy, hey, we're gonna move along and see who else we can get, and then roll the dice. the dice and hope we get somebody as good or better qualified than she is.
And I mean, we're at the one-eleven, it's not like we're going at the one-twenty, that would be the first story, but one-eleven still falls within the old pay scale, I think that's fine, and I kind of agree with your point, I wouldn't move across country either if I knew I was, didn't know that there was more than just step ten to advance, so I think it's partly on us that, you know, the scale was, you know, probably a little outdated for which, you know, for where we're at economically speaking.
Which is crazy, we just updated seven percent previously.
I know.
It's a little hard to keep up with the curve, right? Let's face it.
Yeah.
I am comfortable with, as long as we stay within reason with the salary that was offered, I am totally comfortable with expanding to a different pay scale so that our candidate knows that there is a future. I don't have a problem with that at all, but I don't, I just take issue with pulling a number out that wasn't anywhere on the pay scale that we advertised. So I'm, I'm fine with going, and I'm comfortable with twelve-and-a-half and a step four start, I mean, that's within a few hundred bucks, and I'm comfortable with that. Beyond that, I just, it's something to be reviewed down the road.
Are you comfortable with the additional, with that salary plus the additional fifteen thousand?
That's an office agenda item, I think.
They're all, no, you can take that, listen, I would encourage the board to go ahead and have a motion for twelve-and-a-half percent, if that's what you want to do.
I'll second that.
I did not make a motion.
No.
No, I did not.
Go ahead, if you want to make that motion for twelve and a half.
I will make that motion for twelve and a half percent.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ian and a second by Lori, at the twelve-and-a-half percent, one-eleven-six-seventy-eight.
Yep, just for the pay scale.
Just for that, to prove the pay scale.
It's right in line.
Motion by Ian and a second by Lori for item one, the pay scale. I can't save the numbers, so I don't know.
Twelve-and-a-half percent.
Twelve-and-a-half percent. So I have a motion and a second, oh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, three, were you in favor, Shane?
I was, I'm in favor of the pay scale, it doesn't, yes.
Ian, Travis, Lori, and Shane say yes, Richard says no. Okay, that being said, we can move on to item two now, mate, is that right, Michael?
Yes, now you guys can, you can offer this candidate. So, I support, I want to make sure of the record, Kathy, you, now we have a new pay scale at twelve-and-a-half percent, finance director, you're looking at it, are you saying, are you asking the commission to start you at step four?
Yes.
Okay, so we just need a motion, if that's going to be acceptable for the board to accept that, count it, also at step four on the pay scale.
And we just did that?
No, see, we set this line here, and now we're, that was a general, overall, now we're on her.
Okay, her request is to start at twelve-and-a-half percent, do we have a motion to accept it?
On the step four.
At step four.
On that twelve-and-a-half percent scale, step four.
And I'll make that motion as presented.
Well, second.
Motion by Lori and a second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Same four in favor, same one against. We go on to item three, is the action to grant moving stipend onto the new finance director appointee in any amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Mike, you want to say something to that?
Yeah, so her request is for fifteen, she's talked about some of those considerations. The last moving stipend we extended to an employee who has not yet started, they're coming up, I think, next week. I think we did seven, wasn't it seven thousand?
Six thousand five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred dollars.
Sheriff's Office?
No, IT.
IT.
IT, from Michigan.
From Michigan, and she used to be in Kentucky.
Kentucky.
Okay.
So that is, and so she's requesting fifteen, but that's the furthest board has set, and that's full discretion, so.
Okay, that's a, a not to exceed.
Correct. You can do it at one dollar or fifteen thousand dollars, but not anymore.
And looking at what we gave to the management for the IT person, sixty-five hundred, I mean, almost similar distance to one fifteen thousand dollars, I'm watching dollars here, that's all I'm talking about.
No, we said any dollar.
And so, if somebody on the board has a number that they've got in mind, it can go up to fifteen thousand, I want you to keep in mind, we just gave to an IT person from Michigan sixty-five hundred, so that's up for discussion amongst everybody on board, so anybody want to start a number or to discuss that number, please feel free, up to fifteen thousand dollars. Anyone?
Makes it hard knowing what we had given the IT manager.
Yeah.
But at the same time, this is in the real world, you negotiate, you get what you fight for. Yeah, I was fairly comfortable at seven thousand, fifteen, no.
I would go to ten, personally.
That's what I had written down.
I think anything less than ten wouldn't be appropriate, just because two years ago, when I sat on the Eastern Nevada Alaska Coalition, and we gave ten for our new executive director.
An RT person. An RT person is for however long, a few months, and we'll be in the house of purchase, right?
Yes, we are providing, but I'm going to be charging them rent, so that's not a free go.
Right, but that's significantly less to rent a home than to do what's going on, so, yeah, I had written down ten thousand was my max. And...
The only thing that I, that I considered in that was, in the time, and it has been a relatively short time, but in the time since we granted the sixty-five hundred, we, there has been considerable fuel, risen, risen in fuel, which, that I understand, and I'm willing to compensate a little more for that, but to be honest with you, I'm not comfortable with much more than about seventy-five hundred bucks, because the other expenses, Miss Workman brought up this, where it's down payments on houses, things like that, I don't think those, I, I don't see where those are included in stipends for moving. I understand there's expenses, but, but there's also benefits to taking on new jobs with new growth and potential, and I think that our approval of that last pay scale proved that, and I'm kind of topped at about seventy-five hundred bucks.
I think it's slap in the face to the IT person we just hired a week ago, or just a couple of weeks ago, sixty-five hundred, and we turn around and we're talking about double plus for the new person to come on, we just did this with the sheriff's office as well, so we're going to get into all kinds of global can alarms and others, and why I'm lower sixty-five, and that's where seven, I understand the increase in gasoline or whatever, or whatever it is, and the price to put down on a house, and what's your, that's your decision, but to do with whatever, the rent that you're going to be charging is it, but, again, looking at dollars, I'm just looking at dollars here, and to give fifteen thousand or seven thousand and turn around, one month ago, we haven't started the guy yet, in fact, next Monday, we gave him sixty-five hundred, and he walks in the door, sixty-five, and this week, before he even walks in the door, we're looking at seventy-five or higher, maybe up to fifteen thousand dollars, and to me, that's just not, that's just not right, and we just did this with recruitment for the sheriff's office, the same thing, a month ago, the same exact thing, we offer a six-thousand-dollar increase, and they have to stay up to five years and get appropriated and pay back, but to pay someone, anyone, I'm not, I know I sound like I'm against you, Kathy, but I'm not, I'm simply putting dollars out there, what's right, and how can we turn around and pay something next month, sixty-five hundred, and hire today, two thousand more, or four thousand, or eight thousand more dollars, it just, it just doesn't sit right with me, it's not, it's not being fair, so that's where I'm at, I'm just waiting to hear a number from one of the other commissioners, but I'm just stating what I feel is, is fair, I mean, sixty-five hundred next Monday, and then pay somebody up to fifteen thousand today. So, I just would like to hear a number from the commission that makes them feel comfortable, and I see that we've hired, we've accepted this agreement with Kathy, so now the moving expenses is the next issue that we're talking about, so, you know, I've heard up to ten from two, and not, maybe seventy-five from one, but I'd like to hear a number that would satisfy me that's less than the fifteen. I don't know if I'm going to hear it, but I'd like to hear it. So, is there somebody who wants to make a motion at dollar amount, unless there's other discussion, am I doing this right, Mike?
Yeah.
I'll look to do seventy-five hundred.
Okay, we have a motion by Travis to do seventy-five hundred. We have a second. Okay, we have a second by Ian, motion by Travis and a second by Ian to pay seventy-five hundred dollars. Will that sway, can I ask her that, and will that make her difference?
I think it's our decision, so if she doesn't want to, then we go get another candidate.
Okay.
So, better for it, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay a relocation application of seventy-five hundred dollars. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, no, that was part, I was just too late.
Yeah, you said aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I know, I said no.
And I'm aye, certainly.
Okay, so the same thing, Travis, Ian, Lori, and Shane say yes, Richard says no. So we're done with that, we're giving seventy-five hundred dollars, now I will ask you if that seventy-five hundred dollars is satisfactory to you.
I'd better open up four.
Two.
We're going to do that, right?
Yeah, so you're going to open up item four.
Okay, I'm going to open up item number four, and then ask you that same question. Item number four is discussion for possible action, in the event of an agreement on the starting salary cannot be reached with the new appointed finance director and appointing other finance director applicant, or begin the recruitment for another round of applicants for finance director, position on newly updated pay scale.
Okay, so now, yes, so now, Miss Workman, we, the commission has authorized step four of the twelve-and-a-half increase finance director salary scale at one-eleven-six-seventy-eight, and has authorized a seven thousand five hundred moving stipend. Do you accept?
Yes.
Okay, so now this item is discussion, no action.
There's no action on the item. So we have now, now we'll have to go back and ask for motion on all three, or?
No, no, no. She's going to, she indicated that she's going to try to start around July first.
Okay.
We're excited to meet you.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Welcome to work.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks and work it out with Mike and Elizabeth on your actual starting date, and Elizabeth can work on a training, we thought to work on getting you trained, and you brought up to speed.
We'll start that on Wednesday.
Right, we're going to tie it down. Pardon?
I have an item on Wednesday.
We do have an item on the agenda for Wednesday to discuss that, your, how we're going to proceed with getting you trained for the re-starting. Okay, that being said, we, I think we've come to the end of the meeting. And the next item on the agenda would be public comment, do we have any phone coming on the phone? No, do we have any in the audience? George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a problem with the lady, well-educated, a lot of experience, but when you go out for a position, you need to look long and hard at your pay scale prior to. You didn't do that, that's the only thing that bothers me, not the fact that she isn't qualified, I don't doubt that, I appreciate the fact that she has the degree that she has, I appreciate the fact that she's willing to get her CPA, I appreciate all of that, but you guys weren't fair when you advertised that position at a lower rate, that's the thing that burns me. I'm having a tough time in this community, I see the money going out, and I don't see anything coming in, especially on mine, can't rent my property, you guys got rules and regulations that pertain to some, don't pertain to others, you got to stop that. And when you go out to hire, you put out a pay scale that's outfit, available to everybody, not come back and have to redo the doggone thing. Now I'm not mad, maybe it's rings.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment in the building? And I'll make one last call on the phone, anything on the phone, Mike? Hearing none and seeing none, this motion, I need the motion to return. Is anybody in? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, non-passionate? Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I'll see you all.
This has been a Georgetown production, George Chatchis reporting.